Welcome. I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission Special Meeting of October 14th, 2021, to order at 7:01 PM. I will take attendance. Mr. Walker is absent. Mr. Donovan, myself, will be serving chair. Is here. Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Ms. Kim Kay.
Here.
Mr. Peck.
Here.
Ms. Thurlow.
Here.
No Mr. Liska. Ms. Markovitz. Mr. McPherson. No. Mr. Mulholland. Yes. Roseanne Hardy. And our attorney, Mr. Mark Zamarka. At this time, I would like to make somebody make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the Dravik Cell Tower Appeal and the Landmark Affordable Housing Appeal. I invite the town attorney and staff. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim Kay, second by Mr. Dwyer. At this time, we will enter executive session at 7:02.
Do we have to vote?
Do you like it to be seated?
You may. Yes, Ms. Markovitz, thank you. Sorry. I stand corrected. Sorry.
Move the vote on the motion.
Do I have a vote? All those in favor to go into executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain. So moved at 7:03. Sorry about that. Back in a... We are now out of executive session. I would love a motion to adjourn our special meeting of October 14th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Let's have a break. Okay. Good evening, everybody. And now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission. That's my wrong one. Where is my page two? Pardon me. Sorry, guys. Just giving them a thank you. Sorry about that, guys. Eastlime Zoning Commission Meeting Order, October 14th, 2020... Excuse me, 2021, at 7:30 PM. Uh, it's roll call. Mr. Walker is not with us. Mr. Peck is here. I, myself, is here. Mr. Dwyer is here. Kim Kay is here. Ms. Thurlow is here. No Mr. Liska. Ms. Markovitz is here. No Mr. McPherson. We have Mr. Mulholland. We have Brooke Stevens. We have Roseanne Hardy as ex officio. Seeing that Mr. Walker is not here, I'd like to sit Denise Markovitz, please. Now that you're set, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. I'd like to welcome everybody. And I'd please ask, do you silence your cell phones, please? Item number one is a POCD implementation presentation presented by Mr. Gary Geisell, the second Planning Director, and Michelle Williams, Vice Chair, Eastlime Planning Commission of the Eastlime Plan of Conservation and Development as adopted November 9th, 2020. Ms. Michelle.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us on your agenda tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here and just chat with you a bit about our newly adopted 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development, POCD. As I am sure you are all well familiar with, but just as a history lesson for anyone else who's listening in tonight, this is the town's planning document which needs to be updated at least once every 10 years, both as good practice and also to be filed with the state and keep us eligible for various discretionary funding through the state of Connecticut. So we were due for our update. Our last version was the 2009 POCD, which had been updated slightly in 2010. So our 10-year clock was on and was expiring in December of 2020. So just wanted to kind of walk you through the update process and let you know where we are now. In 2019, the Planning Commission, which kind of owns, oversees the document, formed a subcommittee to begin the update process. The subcommittee started with researching what had transpired since the 2009 POCD and then began reaching out to all of the town boards, commissions, departments, and relevant stakeholders to invite them to sit on a steering committee and/or provide feedback. And that's when we were very lucky to have Mr. Peck volunteer to sit on the steering committee, so I want to just thank you for your continued service on that. And we got together the steering committee and we talked about the goals for this version of the document. And we came up with three main goals. The first was that we wanted the update to be a very collaborative process, to invite as many residents, stakeholders, groups, boards, commission, staff in to collaborate on it as possible. We really felt like the more people that were involved in creating this document, the better reflection it would be of where our town wanted to go for the next 10 years. We also wanted to make it a little bit shorter than the last one. I think you all probably had a copy of the 2009 POCD. It's quite heavy. So we wanted to shrink it down a little bit and try to use a little brevity to communicate the plan in a shorter form. And then we also wanted to set up the subcommittee in the process so that, once the update was complete and the document was filed with the state of Connecticut, that wouldn't be the end. We wanted to make sure that we facilitated, as a steering committee, the continued execution of this plan, so that the collaborative work that went into updating it over two years wasn't for naught and that, you know, it really continued on as a good map and vision for the town. So at the... As with those goals in mind, at the end of 2019, October, November-ish, we launched a community survey for residents of Eastlime. Over 500 people responded to our online survey. In early 2020, we held a public forum in this room where we heard two hours of feedback from residents telling us, you know, what they like about town, what they'd like to improve, what they feel needs to change. And then we worked for the next 10 months as a group with members of the steering committee, other boards and commissions, and staff to update the document. It was presented to the Board of Selectmen in August 2020 and was unanimously adopted by the Planning Commission in November of 2020, filed in December with the state. So as I said, one of our goals was to kind of continue on with the POCD once the document had been filed. The steering committee has remained intact and meets every other month to touch base on the status of the various recommendations in the plan. We've also been continuing to meet with town boards and commissions to support them, help them facilitate the updates that apply to them. And just, you know, for some of the people we've... Some of the groups we've visited this year, we've spoken to the Board of Selectmen again this year, this summer. We spoke to the Board of Finance, the Historic Properties Commission, Natural Resources, Agriculture, Parks and Act, the Waterford Eastlime Shellfish Commission, and now you all on the zoning commission to just, you know, formally state that this document has been complete, but we are here to help support in whatever way we can moving the ideas in it forward. So Gary's going to talk a little bit more about that.
So just, I'll try to keep it brief. So all that just looks voluminous, kind of like the last one. But I'm going to hand these out. And what this is, is a matrix that we put together, breaks it down by chapter and with the recommendations. So the way this works is you will look across, you'd find the board or commission responsible for implementation of a particular recommendation. If that box is checked, that would be your, quote, "responsibility." So with that, so this is a quick, easy guide. You can just look at zoning, kind of what's applicable to us, and if you're interested in other boards and commissions, it's all there. With that, I will hand this out. And if you have any questions, comments, please feel free to contact me, Mr. Mulholland, or reach out to any planning commission or the subcommittee. Thank you.
Bill, this is yours.
Happy to take any questions. Now, I have no doubt that Norm's been keeping you well up to date, but happy to answer anything that you might want to ask about.
I have full faith in your commission, so if I do find a question, I know where to find somebody, so. Anybody else?
Michelle, do you have, like, a two-minute brief on some highlights of what the zoning board should be looking at?
Well, I would say that aside from the specific recommendations that are listed in the matrix, and what you're flipping through now is an index of every single recommendation in the plan, and many of them apply to multiple boards and commissions. As you know, you know, one decision can touch multiple governing bodies. But I will say that one of the requirements with the state of Connecticut, again, a requirement, but also a best practice, was to revise this document under the lens of sustainability and resiliency. And I think, you know, the priority items really address that. We are a coastal town. There's a lot of information in there about projected sea level rise and storm intensity. As we were updating this document in 2020, resiliency... The case for resiliency couldn't have been clearer when it came to, you know, supply chain disruptions and shortages at grocery stores. So you'll see a lot of things in there, which, you know, those might not touch zoning specifically, but it'll just kind of give you an idea to, you know, how the document was written to look toward potential future issues and try to address them proactively rather than reactively as they come. So I would say, from a zoning perspective, there's a lot of resiliency measures in there that would apply to this group.
The recommendations, were those the ones from the people that came to the hearing or the recommendations from the planning committee?
So what we did was we took all the feedback from the hearing, from the survey, from the various boards and commissions, and we discussed each piece of feedback to create the recommendations. So in some cases, the recommendation may have come directly from a person who suggested something that we thought was good. But we also looked at a bunch of regional planning documents, different studies that we have, the StanTech Coastal Resiliency Study that I'm sure this group has seen before. Even the Yale Charrette was a reference guide for us. There were some documents from the Nature Conservancy regarding salt marsh and its value to the town from a flood perspective. We consulted a variety of research and pieces of feedback from stakeholders to come up with what's in here. So it's a combination.
It's really well organized. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on. Thank you. The public hearing, Public Act 21-29, Regarding Proposed Amendments to General Statutes, Section 8-2, to Allow Accessory Dwelling Units As Of Right On Each Lot That Contains A Single-Family Dwelling. Said amendments to become effective January 1st, 2022. Legal ad has been run?
Uh, yes.
Yes? And at this time, I would like to introduce our town attorney, Mr. Zamarka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Mark Zamarka. I'm with the firm of Waller, Smith &amp; Palmer. We are counsel to the town. As the chair noted, this is a public hearing on Public Act 21-29, specifically Section 6 thereof, 21-29, is a fairly wide-ranging act. What the commission is concerned with tonight is Section 6, which, as the chair noted, deals with accessory apartments, or otherwise known as accessory dwelling units. You should have a memo from our office in your packet. I won't read it verbatim. I will just hit the highlights. As the chair noted, the act allows accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as of right on the same lot as a single-family dwelling. Now, a town can opt out of this requirement, but must do so by January 1 of 2023. If not, after that, any existing regulations that do not comport with the act will be considered invalid. So essentially, the choice a town has is to either adopt zoning regulations consistent with the act or decide to opt out. If a town does not opt out and does decide to allow ADUs in the town, the town can still regulate or prohibit their use as short-term or vacation rentals. Now, if a town decides to allow accessory dwelling units, the regulations must allow three types of these units. It can be attached, detached, or contained within the principal dwelling unit. It has to provide for a maximum floor area of not less than 30% of the principal dwelling's floor area, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. It has to require that any setbacks, lot size, coverage for detached units cannot be... They have to be less than or equal to that required for the principal dwelling. So you can't enforce stricter lot coverages and setbacks than are for the existing dwelling. Any landscaping or architectural designs have to be the same as those applied to the principal dwelling. Now, the approval process is a little bit different than most zoning permits because it's allowed as of right. The statute, or the act, pardon me, specifically states that the approval process cannot require a public hearing or a special permit, and decisions must be made within 65 days from the date that the application is received. An applicant can grant an extension of no more than 65 days. If a town decides to allow accessory dwelling units, the regulations cannot require certain things. It cannot require a passageway between the unit and the principal dwelling. It can't require an exterior door, except as required by the fire code. Can't require more than one parking space for the unit. Cannot require a familial, marital, or employment relationship between occupants of the ADU and the principal dwelling. Cannot require a minimum age for occupants of the dwelling. And cannot require that the correction of a nonconformity be a condition of approval. Now, as I noted, a town can opt out. You have until January 1 of 2023 to do so. It's a two-step process that begins with this commission. If the commission decides it wants to opt out, it has to follow the following process. It has to hold a public hearing on the proposed opt-out, subject to the usual guidelines of 8-7D with published notices and things of that nature. If the commission decides to opt out, it has to do so affirmatively by a two-thirds vote. And the reasons for the decision must be stated on the record, and the decision must be published within 15 days as per the usual guidelines. If that happens, the next step, the matter goes before the Board of Selectmen, the town's legislative body, and they also have to confirm it by a two-thirds vote. Now, a couple of things, just in general, to point out about the ADU Act. Eastlime currently does not allow accessory dwelling units as they're defined in the Act. The Definition Section of your zoning regulations does allow in-law accommodations. Those are single-efficiency dwelling units that are located within the principal building, and they are subject to special permit controls found in Section 25 of the regulations. And this commission did consider something somewhat similar to accessory dwelling units about four years ago. Those were called temporary healthcare structures. That act would have allowed these type of structures, again, as of right, on any single-family residential lot that was owned by someone who had a qualifying impairment. That act also had similar opt-out provisions, and the commission at that time decided to opt out, and the Board of Selectmen also did. Just some other points for consideration. As noted, because this is an as-of-right approval, and there are no... There can be no special permit or public hearings attached to an application for an ADU, it bypasses the usual process that this commission would have for both the adoption of a regulation and the approval of a zoning permit application. An accessory dwelling unit cannot be counted as part of a town's affordable housing stock, nor can they be required to be considered affordable housing. They are... An ADU would be more expansive than the currently allowed in-law accommodations, as an in-law accommodation must be contained within the principal structure. Here, an ADU can either be attached or detached and does not have to be located just within the principal dwelling unit. If these are allowed, as I noted, an ADU would be an as-of-right unit, meaning that applications will not become... Pardon me. Will not come before this board. And again, there are three types. They can either be attached, detached, or contained within the principal dwelling unit. Again, that is an overview of Section 6 of 21-29, which deals with accessory dwelling units.
Are you able to answer questions?
Sure.
Your reference to the fact that Eastlime currently permits in-law apartments, could you just clarify? The right excludes kitchens, right? Like, you're not allowed to have a... You can have an in-law apartment, but that in-law apartment cannot have a kitchen or a cooking area?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Mr. Mulholland? I know you've got the regs right there. Yes. Yes. The accessory dwelling unit definition does not contain language to that effect.
And my second question, it's in the memo that you provided us. It's the... At the very top, the opening kind of section, the fourth area, I think it's a triple negative, so I just... I need to knit out, like, what it means. So if a town does not opt out, okay, which means we're going to accept ADUs?
Correct.
Okay. The Act does not prevent a town from prohibiting or regulating the use of ADUs for short-term or vacation rentals.
Correct.
So that means that we are allowed...
Correct. Correct.
To prohibit...
That's correct.
Or regulate...
That's correct.
Short-term and vacation rentals. We are allowed to do that.
Yes.
It was a triple negative. It kind of washed itself off.
If you decide to allow them, you have the ability to regulate or prohibit them for use as short-term or vacation rentals. Yes.
That was the... I think it was just confusing the way the wording was written, Mr. Dwyer. Okay. Very good.
The... Yes, yes. So as of January 1, 2022, applications for accessory dwelling units are allowed, yes. And again, the opt-out can be had at any time up until January 1 of 2023.
So if this board does not opt out as of January 1, then 2, this regulation is effective?
Correct.
One thing that I'm also a little confused is if we are going to... Or if somebody's going to allow ADUs that are detached, we cannot require an exterior door?
Unless it's required by a fire code, and I'm assuming...
If it's detached.
I'm assuming, and I do not know. I would assume that a detached structure would require...
You understand what I mean, right?
Would require an exterior door, yes.
They're going out the roof, Terry.
Yeah. Just curious. Anybody else have any other questions for Attorney Zamarka?
I'm wondering what happens after the principal use? Say, you build this separate structure for your parents to live in. Now, you're not going to... You're not going to... There's talk of prohibiting short-term rentals, vacation rentals. What happens? You can use it as a long-term rental? Like a yearly lease sort of deal?
Well, that's a good question. That's not addressed in the Act, and that is a little bit of a difference between these and the temporary healthcare structures, because the temporary healthcare structures were required to be taken down after the use was no longer necessary. That... There is no language to that effect in this Act.
Mr. Mulholland?
If I have a little experience with short-term rentals, I think I can talk to my own data. Choosing to essentially say they're not allowed, they're not prohibited in their zone. So we're using the thirty-day limit, because I think that's the tax code, is that what counts? So that's what we're calling a short-term rental. And we can back that on the rules, so I'm with you people out there doing that short-term now on the SDRs.
So is there something that the zoning commission could do? Say, like, if we choose to go along with this? Can we basically set up some guidelines to follow?
Yes.
In terms of an ADU?
Yes.
Because right now, I mean, this is just being presented to us as, you know, an ADU.
Right, right.
So, yes, we have zoning regulations in effect, but, I mean, this could help people and it could also hurt people. So are we allowed to come up with a set of guidelines for ADUs?
Correct, correct. So the two paths forward are either allow accessory dwelling units and adopt regulations in accordance with the guidelines set forth in the Act, or opt out and decide not to allow ADUs at all.
We can opt out and make our own regulations, whatever we want.
They can't be more...
Based on our own boards.
That's correct. They could not be more restrictive than what is contained in the Act, but yes, that is also a possibility.
So then, if we choose... Excuse me, Mr. Dwyer. So if we choose to opt out of this regulation, we could add our own in our regulations?
That's correct.
Yes.
Which...
That's correct.
Are other towns headed in that direction as well?
I did a quick search. I know... The only town I know of that has opted out so far is Enfield, and they did so back in August, and I did not see anything past that in terms of what they decided to do, whether they decided to adopt regulations on their own or just say no.
Could you expound on that, what you just said about if we write our own regulations? Opt out, write our own regulations? You said we can't be any more...
You can't... We cannot be any more restrictive than the regulations set forth in the Act. It still has to comport with the requirements of the Act. You can't... It's just like with anything. You can't, on a local level, require something that's more restrictive than is permitted by a state statute.
But we can pick certain zones...
Yes.
To apply this to?
That's correct. That's correct. And that's also one of the things that...
And certain other conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
If we opt out, and the law doesn't apply, why can't we then choose to, you know, with our own set of regulations, because it would be irrelevant to the state statute? So could we make the term additions based on coverage, setbacks in lots and building size?
I don't think you'd want to do anything that's more restrictive than... I would check on that, to be sure.
Okay. So we could explore that a little further?
Yeah. Because, I mean, this... It can help people, you know? People starting out and stuff like that. So my question is...
Oh, you're just taking the look. This law, just anybody can get here. Anybody. I could call up Joe Blow. Hey, I'm going to put a rental house next to mine. You can come here all summer, and then we'll rent it out. You have no zoning with this.
What are you reading, Mr. Dwyer?
You're not controlling the zoning anymore.
Well, I understand that they have to follow the local zoning regulations.
Correct. And, Mr. Dwyer, just to be clear, if the commission decides to allow accessory dwelling units, you can regulate their use for short-term or vacation rentals. You still can say, no, you cannot use these for that purpose.
Right.
How would you enforce the... I mean, wouldn't that be hard to enforce?
Ask Mr. Mulholland.
It will. Yes. Yeah.
It is now difficult.
So, I mean, it is something to where that if it is in the regulations, it's there, that if somebody does get caught doing it in terms of, you know, an Airbnb, something like that, then, yeah, they can be held responsible for it. I do know that, you know, like, we don't control Black Point, New Black Point, Crescent Beach, or Giant Snack Beach.
They were there before our zoning.
I am aware that, you know, Black Point...
So you don't compare them. So, you don't compare them.
Mr. Dwyer, please, let me finish what I'm saying. I am aware that, you know, they did come to a decision in their zoning regulations to allow such ADUs. However, you know, they followed some, what's called guidelines and, you know, affidavits to where, you know, basically, somebody would promise to play by the rules, more or less. And their, you know, their houses are allowed within an arm's reach, so.
My point is, we opt out of this, and if we want affordable housing for in-laws or whatever, then we set up our own rules.
This has nothing to do with affordable housing?
No.
No.
Once you pass this, you're working under the rules of Hartford.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, isn't tonight's purpose to hear from our attorney and to hear from the public and not debate among the commission?
It's for everybody. So
That's correct.
The answer is yes, you are correct, going from there. So, going from there. Mr. Peck, any other thing? Denise, you're good?
Yep.
Anne, you're good?
Mm-hmm.
At this time, I would open up to members of the public. Do we have any members of the public who are willing to make a statement? If you do, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for me, please.
Yes, of course. Right about there. Can you hear me all right through the mask? Hi, my name's Nicholas Semenapease, I live over here, I don't know if you knew specific addresses, I live over here on Hope Street, 38 Hope Street. I just wanted to say about, I know, understand from that one, I wasn't actually entirely aware that you guys don't control entirely the zoning for Black Point because of the, I wasn't really sure if I could, you, you, we do not, East Lime does not have any control over zoning laws in Black Point? I was not aware of that.
New Black Point.
Yeah, okay. So, I just wanted to say that I understand Mr. Dwyer's concern about zoning laws, but I very much support the building of accessory dwelling units. I'm not really sure if I totally understand the difference between a mother-in-law suite and accessory dwelling unit, other than apparently a lack of kitchen. It seems to be the only thing that needs to be in there. But accessory dwelling units can be helpful for people. I think we all accept that one. And I understand that there's apparently like a fear about people being able to rent it out, but again, we have, the stone throws away, we have these million-dollar, like, summer homes that people are using. And I think my biggest thing that just jumps out to me is, we, we just had this talk about, excuse me, climate and the effects that that's gonna have on our community, and, I mean, we, we still have this massive sprawl of summer homes that people don't use, you know, or can use, whatever it is, there's not really, they're million-dollar homes, half-million-dollar homes, that people stay in two months of the year, some people stay there longer, whatever it might be. But I don't understand the reluctance of allowing a small apartment to be built as, okay, this person might rent it out. I understand you guys want to have control over who's allowed to, but we have so much in this community that's already, summer homes and all these things, and I understand, and I apologize if I'm not speaking as clearly for it, but I would like to see people be helped out, and I know that this isn't technically affordable housing for a lot of this, but as a person of this one, I know how hard it is right now to find a home, like, my wife and I have looked at trying to upgrade homes and found a, what, a half-acre thing with a thousand square feet for $600,000. And it's like, yeah, that, that's not very affordable for peo, most people. And while we might think, oh, well, you know, back when this was happening, we could all be able to buy a house, that, we've known, we know that that can't happen right now for everyone. I see how many jobs in town are asking for hiring positions, and they're offering less than $15 an hour. Someone can't afford to buy their own home, they certainly can't afford it in East Lime or some of the other communities. Accessory dwelling units are a very easy thing. You know, they're not a great solution, if you ask me, they're not the best, but we have all this sprawl, even in our small town, and I would just like to see some of that be able to put to use in a way that maybe can help people. And I, I apologize if that's not the most articulate way of saying all this, but it gets me a little flustered for some of these, because I really like the, love the idea. I think that the way that some people have made it with some of the ways that you walk through town here, and you can see some of the, I guess their mother-in-law suites are not accessory dwelling units, but the way they're able to match for the architecture, I think that they look great. I think that there's something that's an easy, simple way that can blend in with the character of the town and everything and still make, you know, that it doesn't change the factor of it. I hear people saying, well, we're gonna build these giant, you know, buildings for accessory dwelling units or something, like, I just want to have that little tiny thing that will be able to help people in our town, be able to live here who want to, who, I don't know, maybe they're working at Stop &amp; Shop, or one of the many places that are looking for one of these, and they're just starting out, and they, you know, work full-time but still live in an accessory dwelling unit. I don't know if there's, really that that's gonna solve anything, or everything, I should say, it certainly will solve little things, but I just would very much like to see this town be able to implement the policy of allowing these. I would say that I would hate to see that the only way that we allow them is for short-term vacation rentals. We have going on Airbnb, I found in October that there are a number of air, like, locations available, a lot of those apparently are in Black Point, but that you could rent right now. So, I'm a little less concerned about someone building an accessory dwelling unit simply so they can have it on Airbnb, but I'm not entirely sure for it that that can be part of the regulations. I understand that's difficult to enforce, but it's a little much to hear from me when we can just go just a little bit down the road and they have tons of Airbnbs already available. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mrs. Amarcus.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Spencer Clapp, and I live at 11 Chadwick Place. I'm actually would be promoting, I guess, the, the zoning commission to, not to opt-out, but to accept and create appropriate regulations for the ADUs. This is actually something, which is actually personal for me. I have a younger brother, he's about 18 months younger than I am, who's recovering from a second back surgery. He's a, a teacher in Chile, the country, Chile. And he does not have the wherewithal financially to purchase a home or on his own, he's living in an apartment there. And my intent, if the commission were to adopt this, either, either to have it be as an ADU or as a mother-in-law apartment, because as a family member, and he would be living with me and, and then working here in Niantic. So, this is personal for me as well. I'm actually looking at that as a family member, and I think that is actually what the intent of the legislation was, in terms of, of being able to help out family, as opposed to making a quick buck with a summer rental. My question for the commission, which is, would be in terms of, if you were to adopt regulations and say, which, would you allow, you would be allowed to prohibit the short-term summer rentals, my question would be enforcement. How do you actually, how are you actually going to be able to enforce that in terms of knowing whether somebody is here for one month, two months, or having a year lease? That would be a bureaucratic nightmare to have to set something up, to have people apply and, for that. And more than likely, I hate to say this, but I think that many people would probably just opt not to do that, and if they had a, a unit that was approved, then after that, they would do whatever they wanted to do. Suggestions, if the commission were to adopt their own regulations, would be, I would, I'd add three suggestions. One was to try and put a, a parameter on the square footage. I'm not quite sure how that, how that works for the, the, the state regulation talking about 30% of the square footage of, of particular dwelling. I see Mr. Mahalan shaking his head up and down, knowing that that could be kind of a nightmare. If you had a big, a huge building, a huge home of 4,000 square feet, then it seems, according to those regulations, you might be able to have an accessory, accessory dwelling unit up to 1,300 square feet, which is actually larger than several single-family homes here in Niantic. That seems to me to be excessive. So, perhaps it might, the commission might be considered, might consider actually putting down something hard and fast, that the building official could actually, you know, monitor, say, something like an AUD that would be between 350 and 750 square feet maximum, something along those lines, regardless of how big the house is. Second thing is, is I think that the AUD should be limited to one bedroom. We want to have this be an accessory dwelling unit, we don't want this to have it turn into a two-family home. So, by having a one-bed, one-bedroom limitation on the AUD, you'd be looking at having a single person or perhaps a couple who would be occupying the unit. And then, the third item would be having, limiting it to one bathroom. Again, if it's an accessory dwelling unit, there shouldn't be a need for more than one full bath to accommodate who's ever living in that AUD. And then, just on a, on a, sort of a macro, that's, that's micro, because that's me, but on a macro level, we know that what's going on right now in our culture is that there's, there's a, a need for housing for elderly, and that assisted living facilities are extremely expensive. So, many families of, many middle-aged people are looking at having to take care of, you know, elderly parents or elderly sisters and brothers, and this would be a perfect way to be able to do that with a, in a financially, you know, feasible way, in terms of taking money, putting it in an accessory dwelling unit, as opposed to looking at the cost of long-term care and assisted living facility. And then, the second area is actually the young people, and we know that with what's been going on with COVID, as well as just in the economy as it is, that there's a certain percentage of young people who are drowning in student loan debt, and they are not able to afford to actually save enough money for a down payment on a house, as a gentleman before me just mentioned on that. There's actually, they're actually referred to as the rebound children. They're in their twenties, and they're coming back, and they're living with their parents because they can't afford to live on their own. And I know for a fact, having, having three young, having three sons in their twenties, that I love to see them come back and visit me for about a week. After that, it's, it's kind of like, it's time to move on. So, the accessory dwelling unit would also accommodate these younger people, living with their families, but having independence and separateness, being able to maybe get themselves set financially so that they could also then move on with their lives and, and, you know, have the American dream of owning their own home at some point. So, those are, those are my observations on that, and I would just opt for the commission to, to not to opt-out completely, but rather to carefully control this as much as possible. And because you can't count on people being honest about it, you might want to look at actually creating these, these specific concrete parameters so that the, doesn't get out of control in terms of who's gonna be in these units in the future.
Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I should, um
Ms. Hardy.
Let's remember, as we're hearing all of this, that we have one person who is the zoning official. This is a lot of regulation, a lot of overhead. Years ago, we, the zoning officer had an assistant. This is a one-man show. So, I think that whatever the commission decides, you're gonna have to think pretty seriously about the need of some assistance. I know that that office is already overloaded with permits and requests, and I think this is way too much for a one-person, a one-person show.
Anything, Mrs. Hardy? Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Debbie, the last name is Jett Harris. I live at 19 Center Street. And what Ms. Hardy just said, I can perfectly agree with that, due to blight issues and stuff, we're already suffering in the town, it is hard for one person to enforce that. But setting that aside, my question is, is what happens if the neighborhood has a homeowners' association? Would the homeowners' association be able to weigh in on whether or not they wanted to have this, or would it, would it trumpet or no? Or would it be, you know, if they voted no, would that, that's my concern. Like, there's a lot of associations here. My association, our houses are, as everyone knows, in Pine Grove, they're very small. To add anything to that would be, I mean, it wouldn't meet any kind of guidelines, 30 inches, 30 feet from the road, 12, 12 feet from the neighbors. So, that's my concern. So, with, with neighborhoods that have associations, how would that come into play with this, with, with what is being proposed currently, or the discussions?
Mr. Amarcus?
Thank you.
Or actually, well, I believe, I'm sorry, but I believe that they still have to follow local zoning regulations anyway.
I don't think so, I don't believe that.
It says, am I correct?
The Act states that in any district where there is a single, where there is, where single-family dwellings are allowed, an ADU would be allowed on the same law.
Yeah.
It does not, it does not differentiate between HOAs or anything like that.
No, but, excuse me, but they would still have to follow current zoning regulations.
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. That's your opinion. My opinion is no.
I believe I read it in the PA 21
We have an attorney here.
Can we just ask?
Yes. Sorry, go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Jett, we will address that later on.
Thank you.
Okay. Turning on. Anybody else?
Nicole Davidson, 12 Dean Road. First thing I want to say is, the majority of people that live in the town are not criminals, they do not wish to break the law or the rules. You're basing, you're, what you're saying on a couple of people that may or may not. So, can we first just agree, most people abide by the rules? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Davidson?
My name's Christine Stoll, I live at 41 Asfagachi Hills Road. I guess, I just want to kind of piggyback on some other things that I've heard. I just think everyone needs to think long and hard about this kind of like fear of the other that seems to be coming forward in the conversations here. When I graduated from college, my husband graduated from college, the very first place we lived in was an attached accessory unit. We, we had a shared entrance with another family, we lived in Brookline, Massachusetts, and this lovely family allowed some college graduates, who didn't have a lot of money, to live in her house. And I just think that when we talk about whoever, you know, Joe Blow might be, it's offensive. It implies that people who need to use accessory dwellings are kind of less than. And as I look around, I can't help but notice that our age collectively is a little on the old side. If we want people, and I include myself, but if we want young professionals, not related, not necessarily our, our children, but any young person that we want to come to this town, get involved in town governance, help with things like the environment, because let's face it, a lot of you guys, climate change isn't gonna impact you, because you're not gonna see it. That's just a fact. I'm thinking about my grandchildren, not just my children, you know, and you should be too. So, the rules that you're making, and you kind of have to let go a little bit of the old ways, there are more and more people, population is changing, the direction we're going in is different. So, I would just ask you to stop fearing the other, assuming the worst, and think about how we can plan for a productive future, not for you. Not for you. For your grandchildren, or maybe your children, but I'm thinking as I look around, probably mostly for the grandchildren. Okay, we need to think about this differently. But I find it offensive, and I'm speaking to Mr. Dwyer, I'm speaking to you when you say you don't want any Joe Blow moving in. I'm Joe Blow, okay? I was Joe Blow when I graduated from college, now I'm a productive member of this community, and I own a house in town, and I wasn't breaking the rules or anything like that. So, you just need to think about things differently. Be a little more open-minded. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else? Who's to speak? Mr. Larson?
That's Steve Larson, I live at 47 Asfagachi Hills. You know, it's interesting, I don't often come to this meeting, and the last time I was here, you were considering whether to grant a variance to build 38 Hope Street. And there was a lot of concern about the density, the view from neighbors, there were, there was a lot of pushback that came to this body before 38 Hope There was a lot of pushback that came to this body before 38 Hope was approved. And in retrospect, I think it was one of the best things the town did. I came to speak in favor of that and the wisdom of this group and other groups that were involved. We ultimately made a dent in trying to make it so not just the $15 an hour person, schoolteachers, nurses, there's a lot of people that cannot afford a house in this town. I urge you to adopt these regulations. They're not opt-out, I guess, you don't really have to vote to adopt, you just have to vote to opt-out. I found it interesting, the council elaborated that you have until 23 to opt-out. The regulations become effective in 22. You actually have a trial period. You actually could find out how this works and whether Joe Blow does come or does not come. I think it'd be great if Joe Blow came, personally. I think we need more diversity in this town. I think we have to help our young people. I have, we have to be more visionary and less reactive. And I think this is a visionary piece of legislation. It's not perfect, and there will be pushback and things that weren't quite right. The chairman has asked a couple of times, does this prohibit the use of your zoning regulations? And my reading is it does not, as it relates to property setbacks and the environmental issues and sanitary issues and all the issues. So you can't, Debbie was concerned about what's going to happen in Pine Grove. When you're 15 feet away from the next property, you're not going to be able to build something in there because it's not going to meet any setback requirements. So there are rules in this thing, this is not a rules-free situation. What it does do though, is it prevents discrimination from people that could potentially benefit from such accessory housing. And I think it's extended families, you know, we talked earlier about the COVID and people that are coming home, that generation is returning. We talked about the elderly. We have elderly that own homes that can't afford to pay their taxes and have to leave town. It'd be a great opportunity for them to have an accessory apartment and maybe the income pays their tax bill. I urge you, don't opt-out, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? You're good. Mr. Mahal?
I have a question, Mr. Zemaka. We have a lot of single-family residents in some of our elderly housing developments, and most of them stand alone. Some have a 163, 120. All of us could then have an accessory apartment under this floor, is that correct?
On any lot where there is a single-family dwelling, yes. As long as those meet the definition of single-family dwelling, yes.
And some of our rural housing developments, in one particular zone, construction now is also becoming a comparison, I need experience of plus or minus. Could you speak up, please?
All right, yeah, let me continue, let me ask, I know worries, let me, let the commission do this. So basically, am I correct in assuming that they have to follow zoning regulations?
That's correct.
They do. So in an area such as Pine Grove, basically, if you are 15 feet away, you have to meet sideline setbacks, you will not be able to do so even though considering there's a single-family dwelling on said parcel?
What it says, and I'll read directly from it. Okay. Any zoning regulations adopted pursuant to the accessory dwelling units shall require setbacks, lot size, and building frontage less than or equal to that which is required for the principal dwelling.
So they still have to follow?
Correct.
Regulations?
Correct.
Now, one thing that was said from Mr. Clapp there was the 30% thing, I think he was saying, so like if you do have?
So there is, there is, a maximum floor area is the lesser of 30% of the floor area of the principal dwelling or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less.
That's your minimum size.
So minimum size would be 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, well, maximum.
I'm sorry, maximum, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thanks, everybody.
That's correct.
Maximum, which is bigger than the house that I live in now, just for the record. Okay. So if this commission does decide to not opt-out at this time, and basically like Mr. Larson say, we have, and you said we have until the 20, excuse me, 2023 to opt-out.
That's correct.
We can in fact use that as a trial period?
That is a possibility.
And then if we choose to opt-out then, we can write our own regulations, basically? Am I correct in assuming that?
If you choose to opt-out and you decide later on that accessory dwelling units or something along those lines are something that the town needs, then yes, you could form your own regulations.
And you also stated that we cannot be more restrictive than, you know, said regulations now. So like, also what Mr. Clapp said was like requiring like one bedroom?
We'd look into that to make sure what parameters we'd be operating under. But for right now, what the commission is deciding is whether or not to, really the only action you would be taking now, if you were to take any action, would be to opt-out. Otherwise, if you choose not to, it becomes effective January 1 of 2022. And at that point, it's probably incumbent to start drafting regulations in accordance with the Act.
So if we did opt-out, we could make our own rules and regulations? And you could specify how many bedrooms or bathrooms or whatever?
Yes.
One question. If we agree to take this, Hoptit can go back next year, put in a couple of more lines, just vary that law as much as they want. We're already in, we have nothing to say about it. We're a captive audience.
I guess I'm not quite sure what it is you're asking, Mr. Dwyer.
I'm not following you either, Mr. Dwyer, on this.
We would have a whole other year to opt-out or put in place additional zoning regulations that would be at the purview of this commission. We can amend our zoning regulations at any time, Mr. Dwyer.
Not if it goes against.
Mr. Dwyer, let me try to, let me try to help you with this. If the commission chooses not to opt-out, and don't forget, the opt-out process is a two-step process. If this commission decides to, the Board of Selectmen also has to. If that does not happen, as of January 1 of 2022, this becomes law.
Right, that's my point.
But, but, as was pointed out, as Ms. Kay pointed out, this commission still has until January 1 of 2023 to opt-out.
Right, good.
Okay. Does that help?
No, but Hoptit, in the meantime, can put ins and outs, little.
All right, Mr. Dwyer, I think I'm.
Other requirements, whatever.
Well, the Act, the Act is.
We don't control the laws, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, the Act is what it is at this point. I know of nothing that the legislature is doing that's going to change or tweak it in the near future. My guess is this took a while to get to this point.
I don't trust Hoptit, that's what I'm saying.
So, do you understand what he's trying to say, Attorney Zemaka? So I guess what he's trying to say is like, if we do accept this and then the state can come back and tweak it and without us doing anything, they could modify it to benefit everybody.
Well, that can happen to any law.
Understood.
So.
I think that's where he was going with that, so. Mr. Peck, any questions?
Any more questions? If we don't opt-out, but we want to.
Speaking to the microphone, please.
We want to write a regulation with the Connecticut statute in place. Can we add in regulations or clauses that require that it's allowed in only certain zones?
Well, that's, okay, so that is, that is part of it, okay? What the Act states, let me read from it again. So, any regulations adopted shall designate locations or districts within the municipality in which accessory apartments are allowed, provided at least one apartment is allowed as of right on each lot that contains a single-family dwelling.
All right, what about?
Well, and I will stop you and say that right now, this is, this is subject to interpretation all over the state. What we have seen, the Office of Legislative Research, things like that, basically if there is a single-family dwelling on a lot, then that would be potentially subject to having an accessory dwelling unit.
What about, in your opinion, if we state that the accessory apartment, detached or unattached, has to be the same type, same design as the main house?
No, and it does state that any architectural or landscaping requirements for an A D U cannot be any greater than those required for the, for the main dwelling. So to the extent that there are architectural review areas in town or landscaping requirements, architectural requirements, the same thing that applies to the main dwelling would apply to the accessory.
So we can.
It could not be any more restrictive.
Okay, so we can say, no, what do you call it, mobile home, it must be the same type of structure as the main house?
Main building.
Well, that's, that's.
Possible.
You know, what it says is there are three types of these units that can be allowed, attached, detached, or contained within. And if it's detached, there cannot be any greater restrictions on it, setbacks, lot coverage, architecture, landscaping, than are required for the main dwelling. Whether or not you can say.
So would a detached include like a fifth-wheel trailer?
Well, that's, that's a good question. That's a good question, that's not provided for in the Act.
So then said homeowner could just put in a water and sewer hookup and have their fifth-wheel parked there?
What I would say is those vehicles generally do not qualify as structures. These, when we're talking about zoning, don't forget, and we're putting, you know, we're putting structures on the ground, I would, I would say.
Put in writing.
This is, this is just off the top of my head, that that would not qualify as a structure.
Let's say, one more, one more question. We decide not to opt-out tonight, but we form a subcommittee. What happens if we have not written the regulation by January 1, 2022? But we, and we get an application in January, February?
It would have to be processed according to the guidelines set forth in the Act.
Which is pretty, pretty loose, okay. All right.
But I have to stress, they still need to comply with our existing zoning regulations.
Correct. These aren't meant to trump existing zoning.
Focus on that, it's not like it's the wild, wild west, right? It's, we have our existing regulations which are very specific and have served this town well.
I assume if we opt-out, at a later point, we can opt-in, get back in?
There's no provision for that. From what I can tell, you opt-out, you opt-out. I don't know why there would be any need to opt-back in after, but there's, there's no provision for that in the Act at this point.
Could you move up the microphone for me, please?
I think that this is a very difficult issue. The conditions that are set out, it's very detailed, it's very complex. We have a number of people here this evening who have spoken quite eloquently, addressing their interest, but this affects the entire town. We have a number of communities that are set up with very specific zoning, one-acre zoning, intentionally for houses to be spread out. And I think that there needs to be either, I would suggest that perhaps you consider not closing the public hearing this evening, giving people time to think about it. And also if there was some news coverage of this, we possibly would hear from other people as well. Because this really affects the entire town. And admittedly, anybody could have come tonight to speak, but sometimes people just aren't as aware as they should be. And I think that, you know, you have an entire neighborhood and as many of them, as Ms. Harris mentioned, that they have, they have covenants, that's what people expected when they moved into that area. They have association agreements. Do people who have bought a home in an area where it is one-acre zoning, do they want to now have 30 houses in addition, in addition to their development? That's not my personal opinion, but I also think that that's a segment of the community that we didn't hear from. And I think people need a little more time to think about this and process what we're really, what we're really getting into. So I would, I would request that the public hearing be kept open until the next meeting and then you also would have time to think about it and think what, what you might want to set up as conditions.
So. Ms. Hardy, could I just ask for you to state whether or not your comments are reflective as your role as an elected official in town? Or if you're making these comments as a resident of the town?
My comments are not reflective of the Board of Selectmen because this has not come to us yet. However, I feel that I am speaking on behalf of the community. And having, having.
I think you're either speaking as an individual or you're speaking as an elected official. So I'm just asking you to qualify.
I am speaking, I'm speaking as an individual, but also as an ex officio who has attended zoning meetings for 30 years. And that was just my, my suggestion. Obviously, I could state my opinion when it comes before the Board of Selectmen. But as the Selectmen has not, have not discussed this yet, I am not speaking on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. And I will state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Ms. Alberti?
Camille Alberti, Seven Darrow's Court, speaking as a private citizen. So I appreciate what Ms. Hardy had to say this evening, but I'm thinking as your role of a zoning official in town, that you have spent a great deal of time considering the matter before you. I feel like we have, or you have, followed the correct process by announcing this public hearing. I think you've heard a number of people come out voting or expressing their opinion that they would not like to see you opt-out. And I think that just because that overwhelming response is not what some people may want to hear, that's no reason to stay this meeting and continue it on to another hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alberti. Anybody else? You're good? Commission members, any other questions for attorneys, Zemaka?
I have, I have a quick question, this is just an example, things keep popping up in my head. Say you have a home and there's hardly any backyard, but all the land is in the front. So someone could build a second home in front of the original home if it fits the setbacks?
The Act does not differentiate between front and back.
Just curious.
Thousand-foot homes, thousand-square-foot homes. A series of tiny houses that are energy efficient and solar powered would be an example.
The problem is, you can build a home, but then you rent it out.
Hi, I'm just Beth Hogan, Ten Wildwood.
Please state it again, Beth.
Beth Hogan, Ten Wildwood. And I came late, but you have the power of defining with, don't you opt-in if you decide to opt-in? You decide about front, back, septic, this. You're the board, you create the regulations around this. You're allowing, say you vote to allow it, then you set your regulations. So it's like anything else, a developer can come in here and file a petition to change the ordinances you listen to, if it makes sense, you go ahead and amend it. You have that power too. So in terms of setbacks, septic system, square footage, this, that, that. So terms of setbacks, septic system, square footage, this, that, that, that's your domain. Nobody's telling you to throw that out or don't create something that makes it the correct balance. They're asking you to give people a chance for a housing choice. And how you regulate that in terms of setbacks, front, back, sideways, upward, that's your domain, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Alberti. Any other questions for our attorney? Will we still be able to ask you questions if we do close the public hearing?
Yes, you can hear from staff, but they're here.
Okay. Then I will ask the commission's choice on what they'd like to do. Anybody?
I, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I would second that.
Right, a motion made by Kim Kay, seconded by Denise. Smartbits, all those in favor of closing a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Against.
Mr. Dwyer, against? Obeying?
I'd like to make a, a-
Hold on, Mr. Dwyer, please. Obeying, motion carries five, one, zero. Yes, Mr. Dwyer?
I would have liked to make a motion to continue this for a couple of more weeks.
In a regular meeting?
Among the commission.
Yeah, so Bill, what, what we're, Mr. Dwyer, what we're closing is a public hearing. We, we still have to discuss this.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Okay, sorry about that. Carrying on, let me find my cheat sheet. Here we go. Okay, moving on to the regular meeting. Public Act 21-29 regarding proposed amendments to General Statutes 8-2 to allow accessory dwelling units as of right on each lot that contains a single-family dwelling. Said amendments to become effective January 1st, 2022. Discussion is open. Anybody, Mr. Dwyer?
I'd like to, instead of making a decision tonight, I'd like to propose we keep this open for a little more thought on it. In my mind, this is changing our zoning. We're letting our zoning be controlled by an outside source. If we want to do something similar to this, we could take it under our own, own laws and set up something that we want, not somebody else doing something that somebody else wants. I believe in whole rule, not half the rule.
So, Mr. Dwyer, can I just ask? I'd like to ask you, what exactly, within the statute and our zoning regulations, do you feel like creates a barrier or something that would take this town down the wrong path? Like what specifically in the statute that conflicts with our zoning regulations or isn't confluent with our zoning regulations that is going to create a problem?
Because I'm not looking at a family, friends. I'm looking 20 years from now. 20 years from now, I could see, you could put a, you got a nice area, whatever. Then you got one's house up, then you have another one. Then you have crowded, to use the word. You don't have any specific areas, R1s, R12s, R10s. There's no more zoning at all. It's a house, a house, 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 house. And that's what I see 30 years from now, if this goes through. Not today, 30 years.
I understand what you're saying in term, in terms of that. And like we've said before, they do have to follow the zoning regulations. And as Mr. Peck said, I have said, and other members have said, for right now, we have up until 2023 to opt out. So if we choose not to do so now, we can form a subcommittee as Mr. Peck. Hinted, as you may say, to where we can basically set our own guidelines in terms of, say like an R20, an R40, wherever these things are allowed, in certain zones. Just like we have now, we have light industrial, commercial, C, commercial A, commercial B. We have all that. So is this something to where, I mean, there's no doubt that people need help. I'm not going to lie. You know, they need that. So is it one of these things where rather than just opting out of it totally, is it something that we, you know, basically allow now and come up with a subcommittee to set regulations? You know, way back in 2008, they came up with Gateway. Gateway is my eyesore. Sorry, but, you know, I mean, so-
We need that.
As if they didn't know. So it's one of these things to where it could have its own zoning section in our regulation book. Right? So-
Not a-
Go ahead.
My idea is you're still fighting Harton. And they'll come up with another law and do something else. I don't trust Harton.
I agree, but you know what? It's our capital, so-
I believe, turn this down and make our own regulations.
I don't believe we should opt out right now. If we have to till 2023 to opt out, I think that's, that we should not take action on this and don't opt out at this point.
And you have no issues with us coming up with our own basically regulation?
No, I have no issues with that.
Okay.
I support having a subcommittee to discuss. I think there's things we haven't thought about yet. I actually wouldn't mind waiting two more weeks to vote on it.
Mr. Peck?
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here. This applies to somebody with a single-family house wants to put a single-unit apartment, not double, not multi. I am absolutely in favor of having a regulation that allows this under our control. I'm on the fence whether we should opt out or not. And the reason I'm on the fence is because we have to form a subcommittee. We need a regulation by January 1st. We have an election where half of this board might not be around in a few weeks. And we have, we may have a whole new batch of people here, most. And I don't know if we might have difficulty getting it done by January 1st.
We have to have it done by January 1st. We wouldn't have to, would we? We could have it done January 1st.
If we opt out, is what he's saying?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to take their regulation and fit it to our regulations. But if we don't by January 1st, it's pretty much wide open, right?
I could have 50 applications on January 2nd.
Of 2022.
Up to 2022. So I hear what you're saying is if you supported, if you want a regulation in place prior to that, and I think I'm anticipating your question is could we develop something at a stat level? Perhaps we'd know from legal department that it might be possible. We might still have to have a public hearing to adopt that. I need about 40 days to run the referrals. We might be able to put that to 30, 40 days if we really wish this forward. But that's the reality of where we're at.
I'm a little worried about getting it done on time. And that's, that's why I might be inclined to opt out, but get right on this day and come up with some regulations that fit the town.
So Norm, can I just ask though, again, based on the statute and knowing that our zoning laws support the statute, right? They have to work together, they will work together. What is it in the statute do you feel would cause problems for our town? That's, that's what I'm not understanding from the members that I've heard from, from this commission. There hasn't been any specific concerns. It feels to me like we're acting in fear. And, and there, there needs to be specific concerns with the statute.
I'll give you two.
Okay, that would be great.
That they're, they're, they're designing sort of a cookie cutter regulation that is supposed to fit every town, but obviously doesn't. Number one concern is the type of building that this ADU will be. I'd like to nail that down. And what zones these should be allowed in. Just a few, you know, a number of acres. You can add a few other things in there that would, that would work for us. And I just don't think we, the holidays coming up, I don't know if we have time to come up with a regulation, a good one, by January 1st. Although I'd love to. I think, at first, I didn't like this at all, but I think, listening to the people here tonight, I, I think it's a good thing. It could be a good thing.
Mr. Mulholland, in all hindsight, what is the probability of you receiving 50 applications January 2nd, 2022?
There's really yet to be determined. I'm not going to know that. I don't think anybody else knows. It could be one, it could be two, it could be none, it could be a few.
So, Mr. Mulholland, when you receive an application, what is the period of time that the town has to act on that application?
Typically, it's 30 days. If the application package is complete, well, because it not only will go to my office, it will go to the building as well, and it has to be kept up with the White House District, tax, et cetera, so it's going to be a whole system in place in the process. If the application's completed, it might get out in less than 30 days, depending on how busy we are. I signed up 100 permits today, five hours. And we're very busy right now, as Norm knows and many of you know. A lot of unknowns in this process.
Okay, so-
Another item, Kim, is that, you know, I don't like to overburden this board and have us control everything. But maybe some of us would like to be able to hear these applications. This regulation as it's written is a staff approval. There may be some neighbors who might have a problem, and they will not have a chance to speak unless there's a public hearing. And the way this is written now, there's no public hearing. Maybe there'd be a few that would need, should have a public hearing. It may be, maybe we want to write it as if it's optional to have a public hearing. That's a possibility.
Is it, Attorney Mark, is it, if we come up with our own regulations, as I understand it, we cannot be more restrictive than this? Am I correct in assuming that?
I will check to make sure that that is, that is my initial reaction.
So therefore, it says in this proposed regulation that it does not require a public hearing. So if we come up with our own regulations, we cannot require a public hearing? Am I-
Again, same answer.
Because I did read it in here, but, so if-
Wait a minute, excuse me.
Sorry, Mr. Peck.
Why couldn't we require a public hearing? If we follow the, the regulations that are no stricter? Because one of our, you know, one of our responsibilities is to listen to the public.
I understand, but didn't you say that if we come up with our own regulations, we cannot be more strict?
Let me do this, Mr. Chairman. You can see this is, this is a question that the commission wants an answer to. Let me do a little research, I'll be glad to report back.
But wouldn't that be debatable by somebody who doesn't agree with you?
That's why we do the research.
And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen all along.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mulholland?
If you choose to continue discussion to another date, our next meeting's the 21st. I have a very full agenda, you will be free to have five hours exclusive of this issue. The next open is November 4th, which I have a little more space available. I think only one item on that, unless something else is carried over. You will be free time this month as is.
Yeah, I know. I wore a tie twice. So, Mr. Smart, is this something that you could look up for us and come back to us on said date?
Absolutely.
So as I understand it, if we take no action tonight, we are not opting out?
No, we are not making, we are not making any decisions. So basically, what we're asking for is some information from our town attorney on the questions that were raised to us. And we can do a little more homework ourselves.
Mr. Chairman, if, if to Bill's point, we're going to revisit this topic on November 4th?
I do believe.
That's my open spot.
That's fine.
Unless if this commission chooses to, you know, sit for five or six hours.
Or have another special meeting.
Or have another special meeting, thank you.
If you can look for a date, I've got to sit with the calendar and go down and look at your schedule so that I can find a spot where you'll have some free time and not be inundated with other applications to have this discussion. And I, my opinion is that you can focus on this discussion without having, you know, an attorney.
All right, with that being said then, I would ask the commission on what their view is.
So if I could just finish my thought. So I would like to ask that each commission number read through the statute in detail and come with specific concerns where we might need to flesh out details or add to our zoning regulations. Because I, I heard a few things from Norm, which are defining the zones and number of acreage. We heard tonight from the community about limiting it to one bedroom, one bath. I, I think these things would be helpful to qualify so that we could determine whether or not we could formulate a zoning change in a public meeting, to Norm's point, before this commission turns over, because this commission will turn over. And if we do not, if we're not able to get to a vote and a working regulation change before this commission turns over, I, I think this is going to be, you know-
Hot topic.
Yeah, it's going to, and it could be problematic for the town if we do not vote prior to the change in the commission.
I agree with everything Kim said.
Do we agree on a date? We, would we like the, Mr. Mulholland and his office to see if we can come up with another special meeting? Or do you want to continue to next week? Which could be five or six hours? Or to November 4th? Is that a good date?
I believe you support November 4th as our next schedule.
Yes, because 2nd is a Tuesday.
Personally, I, I would not like it to be, I would like it to be a separate ad hoc meeting. I don't want it tacked on to our four-hour session next week because I won't make it, I'll fall asleep. But I think this warrants a special meeting because I think it's important to the town, and I think we need to do something, whatever that something is, before the commission turns over.
Absolutely.
I agree.
So the week after the 21st?
Mr. Peck, you agree with that?
Yep.
Mr. Dwyer, you agree with that?
I'm a believer.
Yes, Mr. Earl?
Yes, I, I don't think we should vote tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mulholland, could you please find us a date?
So I will get back to all of you, we're working on tomorrow morning so that we can set something up so that you can check your schedules and I can make sure we have the availability of rooms, et cetera, all the necessary stuff. And that you have enough time to concentrate on this one issue in this process.
And I'm sure Attorney Smart will be here.
Yes.
I don't know if the Thursday after the 21st is-
It's the 28th.
It's the 28th.
Something like that. So, tentatively, 7:00 or 7:30?
I would love to go 7:00.
I would too.
Fine. 7:30?
Mr. Peck, you good?
Yep.
So, okay, so what I-
I'll do whatever, but 7:30 is better.
So a special meeting for 7:00, I think, 28, I'll go down and move this tomorrow morning, and I'll have an email sent to you tomorrow morning. And then I'll, so this is my third. Will you be available on that date? I'll be there. Thank you.
Do I need a motion for that, or?
I think a consensus is acceptable, Mr. Chairman. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move to-
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain. Needing adjourn?